Councilman Mayor, this is 5:17. We got a blessing to be seated.
That's right.
Father, as we come before you tonight, I come thanking you for the service of these men and women who have been so faithful in serving us and our community as council members. I pray, Lord, that as decisions are made tonight, that you would give them wisdom and that any votes that would be taken would be taken in accordance with the will of the citizens of the city. Be with us now, of course, in your son's name, I pray.
Amen.
Any additions to the agenda?
I do have some additions.
Can you guys take the microphones? We can hear you out here.
We can't really hear you at all out here.
We can't hear you at all.
Five-minute executive session, non-elected personnel to discuss the chief of police under police department.
We got a deputy session, five minutes. Non-elected personnel to discuss the police chief. You hear a second? Got a motion and a second? All in favor? All opposed? Passes three and one. Can you hear me, Jamie?
Well, we probably don't go ahead. Shell building, shell building.
You want to make a motion?
Make a motion, move. I'm here to the shell building.
Second.
Motion made to move to the shell building in a second? All in favor?
Recombating the meeting at 7:10.
7:10.
Recombating at 7:10? All in favor? All opposed? Passes four and one. Where we left off, we need to give the personnel a policy. Council want to go over that?
Can you talk into the mics? We can hear you, please.
Turn your mics on.
Can we just add anything to the agenda?
It's already added. Do you have any more? New business personnel policy. Okay?
Bobby, can you use the microphone, please, so we can hear you?
No, you can hear me fine. I can speak up if you can't.
Please, we love you too.
I will put it down. You all will be able to hear me before it's over with.
Thank you.
Citizens have comments. Two minutes per person. We start here and go over two minutes each time again. Any council need to say some comments?
I'd like to. I'd like to take, is, is, is this on right? I'd like to encourage you to not do away with the police department. There is a number of us here, it's not everybody that's here, that does not want this to happen. We put you guys on the board. You are not to vote how you want to vote. You are to vote how the community wants you to vote. The guys do more than just the obvious. There's lots of things we would have to give up as a community if they are not allowed to continue. And I think it's in our best interests as citizens that you keep our thoughts in mind when you're deciding this. Thank you.
Yeah, it'd be helpful if you raised your hand, please. Thank you.
Besides what Linda just stated, the obvious, something we all need to think about, in my opinion, is that we have a new business in town that would be very open to negative people that need to be taken care of and watched over. Our new pharmacy, which houses many prescriptions, there is a very huge negative drug dealing business that needs to be watched out. Losing our cops or our city police, in my opinion, would not benefit that, period. Thank you.
As all the other people that are here, we're here in the defense of the police department. We have a good city, great people, good improvement, as you just mentioned, have a new pharmacy or run have a new store. I had a list that would take 30 minutes, but I see the council says two. There have been great improvements in St. John's, and we expect you all to go ahead and keep them that way, keep it up. We are not a negative community. We're positive, and that's where we intend to stay. Thank you.
I know this may sound a little odd, but in defense of the police department, I lived here about 12 years ago. And when I came back, I saw a guy in the city, but I'm seeing it coming alive again. And I had a personal call from an anonymous caller a few weeks ago, late at night, wouldn't identify myself, but they informed me they were going to kill me, followed him home. So I was advised to call 911. I did. Within minutes, Officer Saylor was there, Officer Rudy, I'm sorry, he was there to make sure I was okay, to take down the information, to get the number of the caller and follow through on it. If we don't have a police department, we got a lot going on here, elderly people and one on, maybe one, who needs to be sure that they are safe. We need our police department.
Okay, I'm probably one of the newest members of the community. I've been here less than a year, but I want to know, I want to talk on behalf of the police department. My husband works at a crap, but we chose St. John's specifically for this reason, that we would have protection when we need it. I have three young kids under the age of three, and I need to know that they're going to be taken care of no matter what happens.
Hi, I'm also fairly new to the city, as is my husband, my sister, and my brother-in-law. And we have been here since April, and believe it or not, we've had to use police department three separate times, all very odd issues, but they've all been there within five minutes of calling. They have made us feel at home and safe, and that's something huge coming from a big city. When we lived in the Atlantic area, you know, we were terrified to go out after dark. Here, we feel like we can walk around the city, we could come up and see the Christmas lights at night. He wouldn't have called us doing that where we were from, and that's one of the reasons we moved here. But they have all come in, and it's all been done for once, so, you know, we need each and every one of them to be kept as much as possible, because they've all been excellent. They've all been, just done exactly what they are paid to do. Thank you.
I understand that the council may vote to disband the police department at this meeting or some future meeting. I think it's inappropriate for an outgoing council to make a major policy change and leave, and leave dealing with the ramifications of that change to a council that didn't make the change. Secondly, I was told a few days ago, and this may not be accurate today, that no member of the council or representative of the council had met with the county commissioners to determine what costs may be involved in having the county take over the police service. I don't know what it would be, but I was told by one county commissioner that starting point in the information was Kingsley, which the city Kingsley pays $410,000 a year to the sheriff's department. Thank you.
If the council votes to do a life of the city police, my theory is that if it's done now for budgetary reasons, we're not going to be able to find the money in the budget if at some point St. John loves to go back to have an active police department. And I've yet to talk to anyone, and I've been asking a lot, who is in favor of this other thing, two city council people that I've been told are wanting this to happen. So listen to those of us who put you in office, please.
It is, again, it's, you get to speak one time for up to two minutes, since we have such a big crowd.
I don't know if we're going to vote tonight or not. I would agree with the gentleman that if you vote tonight, we're, and the decision is to deal with the police department. That's the old council leaving, the new council with some things that's going to be a long lasting effect. I would encourage you to consider two options other than, along with voting tonight, is to wait until a new council comes on and vote, or have a citywide vote so that the council knows exactly what the city desires. I'm sure that there may be some citizens in the city that would agree with doing it with the police department. I'm not sure for any that do that. But rather than a few people making a decision of major consequences going to last for years, I would prefer to see us go to a citywide vote. I know it will cost money to do it, but I believe that that would be an option that needs to be considered as well. Thank you.
Yes, I was just curious, what do you guys think the response time would be with our police department if we had a school shooting? Think about that. You all live in this town too, right along with us, and you have kids that are in that school. How would you feel if you voted out our police department and we had an active shooting in that school? What do you think that response time is going to be without Adam, Eric, and Charlie here? Just a question you might ask yourselves, because you do live here too. And one other thing is, I didn't realize that here a while back, up until recently, that the shortstop had been annexed in to the city. And from what I understood, was due to the fact that the county's response time wasn't what they needed at the time. I don't know if I'm right, I'm just stating that. And thank you all, have a good evening.
I do have a quick comment to make. I would like to once say, I, of course, am in support of a police department in town as a citizen that lives here, has a kid over here. I feel it's important. I stated this three years ago when we fought about a fourth officer being added, and I still feel it's the same. Our county law enforcement does a phenomenal job. I will not take that from them. I work for them. They are great people, but we, we've got the money. And if we, if we don't, we can come up with it, because I feel we're willing to pay for it. And so I won't take anything away from them, the county, they do a great job. But the chief is here tonight, and our other two officers are here tonight, and you guys are supported, we care about you, we want you around, and that's all I have to say about it. I do feel that we need our police department. And I don't know what you guys are going to do if you are going to vote or not, or at some point in the future, but just remember for that. Thank you.
I know I've spoke before, about three meetings ago, but I just wanted to reiterate that I respect what the county sheriff's department does, and they do a good job at what they do. I respect what you guys have to do, and I would not want to be in your place to have to come against all these people. But one thing I wanted to add about being in a small town is that my youngest daughter and I were in a rollover accident earlier this year, and the response time that we had getting to us out of town, where we were out of town, was tremendous. And once we were able to get out of the truck safely, and my youngest daughter saw Adam coming towards her, the look of relief on her face of knowing, just knowing him, that she knew him, she just, it was like the whole world was okay, no matter that we'd just come out of the truck that was rolled over on its side. In a bigger town, we wouldn't have that. And it makes me feel good having six kids to have been raised in this town, knowing that they can feel safe. And I'm glad I'm not in your shoes, but I do hope that you listen to the people in your decision if it's made tonight or in the future.
Well, I do realize that budget's the main problem that we're having with this, and it's going to cost more whether we get the sheriff's department or keep the city police, it's going to cost. I think the city people are willing to pay extra on electric bill, because you said that's your main short income, is electric bill, property taxes, and sales taxes, if I'm correct. Why can't we add more money to sales tax, another penny? I think everybody's willing to spend an extra penny per dollar to make sure we have security in our town. Plus, even if you have to, raise the killer watch up a little bit. I mean, you know, don't skyrocket it, but why can't it get raised up to balance it out to keep what the city wants and what the city, you know, the citizens of the city want to keep? I don't see what there's a problem. It can be budgeting in, and it can be made to work. And there's no reason to get rid of the police department, especially when everybody in town's got kids, the kids run the street, they walk to the swimming pool, they walk to the park, they go to the skate park, there's always police around. And the kids know that. And they all know the officers. And they're all friendly with them, they'll come over and talk to them, they talk to Charlie, they talk to Adam, I mean, they talk to everybody, they feel safe, secure. Where else can you find safety and security? You're not going to find that with just the sheriff's department coming to town every now and then. I know we have one deputy who lives in town, but he works nights, so he's always in bed during the day or at home during the day, but I know he's on call, but it's the idea of the police being there, just like when school gets out every day. The kids know there's a police department right there. They're safe going home. We don't have kidnappings and stuff like that going on in this town because we have police always around, keeping an eye on our kids, and kids feeling safe.
I've lived in St. John for 37 years. I've lived in Stafford County 73. I feel safe in St. John. I know everybody up there, except me, are returning personally. We're a progressive town now. For a while, yes, it was dying, and it made me very sad, because I'm going to live out the rest of my life here. We have a new business. We have another one promised to come. We have people returning to our town. We have new people coming in. Why do we want to go backwards now? I just feel like it is a backward step, gliding down. I really do. I've heard rumors of who's for and who's against. Those who are against, please reconsider. It is in the best of our town that we would keep our police department. And if we need money, you'll find it.
First of all, I have a question. Has the budget for 2018 been established and passed? What changes can be made to that budget? Can you do anything without the vote of the community?
Nothing at the moment, no.
Do you have to have the vote of the community to make that change if you were to let the police department go?
Y'all, did you ever figure that out?
I guess I don't understand the question.
If the budget has already been passed?
I guess it's an assumption that the county taking over the service would exceed the budgetary amount of the police department.
Say that again?
You're assuming that the expense for the county running that service would exceed what it costs to run the police department, correct? Is that what the question is?
Well, that's what I heard.
That's not my question.
But that wasn't my question. My question was, can the police department be done away with if it's already been budgeted into the 2008 budget?
The city can decide not to spend money, correct? Yes.
They can.
The city can decide not to spend money, just because it's budget, it doesn't mean they have to spend it. But I would have no idea what sort of thing. It would certainly require a vote of people to move additional funds into that category if additional funds are needed to pay the county, for the county to provide that service. We're not generating additional revenue, I guess is what my answer is.
I'm going to get a lot of comments after what I'm going to say, but, you know, if you don't like St. John and you don't like our police department, you have the prerogative of stepping down off the council and leaving the town. I'm just kind of tired of all the bashing Trump and bashing our state for later, they do a damn good job.
I'd like to say I'd like to keep the St. John Police Department. I was one that voted for four officers, but personally, I'm out every morning in this town 365 days a year, throwing a paper, and it would be really nice to see that fourth officer actually riding around checking things. That is the only downfall I see by having the fourth officer. A lot of times, they were home sleeping after 2:00 a.m. or whatever. You cannot believe the activity in the mornings between 2:00 and 5:00 a.m. in this town. There's a lot to see, people, a lot. And yes, I do think we need the city police department.
I'm a small business owner, and if I didn't already have my business and there wasn't a police department in this town, there was no way I would come to this town. A lot of people won't let me to St. John if there isn't a police department, because there's no security, they won't feel safe. It's crazy to get rid of our police department. If you want our town to die, vote to get rid of it. Our town will die. And there's nothing that we can do.
So I think it's important that we have a police department, especially as a business owner in town. I got a couple buildings down, it's nice to know that the police are, you know, I hope the police are looking out for them, I'm sure they are, I've talked to them about it. My west shop, I call it the drug alley. I watch, I mean, they just run drugs up and down that alley like a freeway. So I think it's important, I think it's important that we have a police department. I think it's really important for the whole community. But I also know that you have a budget that you have to meet, and I know that it's probably strenuous for three officers to have to figure out how to cover the place 24 hours a day. But, so I think it's great to have a police department, but I also feel like the police officers of the community should also feel lucky that they have the jobs that they have, they make an income that they make, they have a great insurance program, you know, that a lot of people don't get. So I think that maybe the police department itself should use a little more creativity to be able to patrol different hours, different times, different days. You know, we don't need, there's times during the day that we don't necessarily need coverage. So I think we need a police department, but I think maybe just, you know, maybe if we can't do a fourth officer, we just sit down and take a look at things and figure out how to be creative.
I'm one of the ones that just moved here from Atlanta, and I've had two opportunities to be very impressed with the police department. Two days after I moved here, I had a terrible accident at home, and Charlie Brown was there, I think he was the first one there, and I don't think he was even on duty, he didn't have his uniform on. And he was very comforting, and it took the 20 minutes for, you know, the paramedics to get there. So, yeah, I was very impressed with that. But secondly, the chief came to the door one day, and recently, and was looking for my brother-in-law, because he has some rental property, and he had noticed that there was some activity there, and he knew nobody lived there, and he just wanted to talk with him and make sure that he knew what was going on. And, wow, I mean, that's pretty impressive, that they're really looking out for anything though. They notice details like that, and I'm just real impressed with them. I don't want to lose them. That's, you know, we've got family here, they were new, and we probably have more than they're moving in. So, yeah, this is growing town. Hopefully it'll continue to grow.
I am a business owner, and why should I have a business here for no public? You know, why should any business come here and have a police department? I mean, not have a police department. We're going to have a store, it just doesn't make any sense. You know, on the storage units down there, there's a lot of dollars out there in our storage unit, of a lot of people in here. I mean, come on, we need a police department. Don't quite understand this.
My wife and I moved to this community 10 months ago, so relatively new companies to the city. We purchased residential property here to consider more dating the property. We would not have moved here if we wouldn't have had assurance that we would have decent law enforcement. Problem with ICA here is that too often there'd be something that would be developed and out in the county that would demand attention at the same time it needs something done inside the city. What are you going to do in those cases? We need adequate coverage 24/7, seven days a week. So I would encourage you, we have two random sons in high school here, we could have Joe and Russell, we've got Russell as well as St. John. We chose this community, we love it here, we want to be productive citizens here. That's all I have to say, but please consider it, because of what we do. That's all I have to say, but please consider it, because of what we do.
I just moved here about eight months ago, and I don't want to give you any of your best advice at this point, the choices you have to make, but I want to tell you from my view, I came from a small town, and we didn't have police department, we just had the sheriff. And the wait times, because you become second because they have another job. The wait time for us was on average 20 minutes, and if it wasn't important, they would call us and tell us, "We'll get to you when we have time." And sometimes it would be till the next day. Even if it was like, "Come out, there's someone hot rodding around town, there's children playing in the street." It's one of the main and good qualities of this community is knowing that you have your police department. And they know you, they can walk up to you and they shake your hand and like, "How are you?" and "How are the kids?" And it's one of the reasons that we chose this community is because of the having the security, plus how much is growing. It's gonna have, it's supposed to have a store, it's got a pharmacy. All of these businesses here in town count with this department also. Just take that into consideration. I know and I hope you'll make the best decision. Thank you.
I know not too many years ago, our current mayor was one who's very adamant about having 24/7 police department. That's when Jill was in as mayor. He was on the council, he was very adamant about having 24/7. Another question is, when is the other council member not on an important night like this? That's the question I ask.
I answer your question. The other council member is at a ballgame at Larder. He is coming, he'll be here late.
Thank you.
Do we have any more comments?
Any more comments from anybody?
We have one comment.
I moved here from Seattle many years ago, and one of the main reasons was because it was like Mayberry. It's safe. It is, I love the fact that we know them. It's not like you call the police and some stranger shows up and they act mad because you called them out. I had to call, I had to call Charlie one time at 2:00 in the morning because I had to go tell somebody their grandson had died. And he came and was supportive, he didn't act like I was being ridiculous. And I just, it was just to comfort this woman who had lost her grandson. And you know, in Seattle, that's not gonna happen, in any big city, right? If you don't have somebody, aren't they gonna come over and, because you have to go tell somebody something horrible? These are things that happen in a small community, you share your life. And our police officers, we know them on a personal basis. That's huge. And if you have never lived in a big city, you probably don't really understand how important it is to have good police officers that you can trust and that you know.
Any other questions or comments? Hold on. As a senior, the assistant comments, the honor of considering agenda. Approve the minutes from Rayland Council meeting November 21st, 2017. Approve the appropriation orders, 12-5, 2017, $68,329.78. Your data motion. Got a motion? Got a second? All favor. Pass this for him. Department heads. Lisa Corlile, not here. Police Chief Adam Saylor, report.
I don't have anything.
I make a motion for a five-minute executive session. Not elected personnel to discuss the chief of police. The mayor, council, attorney, and police chief.
Motion's on the table, I hear a second.
Marshall, just to clarify your motion, this is just related to not elected personnel, it's not related to the department, correct?
Correct. Second.
Got a motion on the table, a second. Any more discussion? All favor. Pass this for him. Going into executive session. How long? Five minutes? Let's be in bed for him, bring the need. Anybody got any questions for police chief? Adam, you got anything else?
No, sir.
Fire chief Mike.
I don't have anything.
City court Jamie. City superintendent Jeff, not here. City attorney.
This personnel policy, you learn around, I have not had a chance to read this, I just received this this evening. I just want to be somewhat aware of this, maybe some of those decisions that I should make. See if that's a good property or bad.
Is there any other departments that have a chance to look at that through your report, so the decision would be?
I think it's not that bad.
It's really a lot of changes to the budget to make, just not changing.
It's not reported.
Yeah. Elevation of officer.
So consensus of councils in August.
It's revised version.
But what's going on with that new business anyway? It's gonna kind of hit the top box.
Anything else?
Can we start the speakers on? If you might, if you're interested, we'd like to hear what you're talking about, please.
It's on now.
Anything else? That's Jamie, or John? Move on. All business, police department, council.
I have to say, to the agenda, just basically because I didn't know if we were gonna continue to talk about looking into switching the police department over to the county. You know, I feel like it's only fair for, to let our police officer know whether they're gonna have a job in the future. Adam and I just got the council meeting to do what our consensus was. I didn't know if we needed to vote on that, or... I'm all for keeping our police department. I would still like to explore the options and what is available. If for some unknown reason down the road in the future, 15 years, 10 years, five years, something did come up that we did need to do something, at least we'd have a starting point and we wouldn't be behind the horse. We would be ahead of it. But I'm fine with our police department. I know not every citizen in this town needs a police department, but I do feel that the majority of the citizens do. And that is what we're here for, is for the citizens. You know, we are a smaller retirement elderly community, and I think those people rely on our police department. I think it is something that we need. I do think there are changes that can be made. But I don't know as a council of four or five would even, or should even, vote on something like that. It should be brought to the citizens for a vote if that does come down. But I do think that the citizens need to know what it would cost in the future. If it ever come about, and that's what I would like to do. I would still like to explore it, but at the time, I see no reason to have our police department worry about not having guns.
Marshall, I'm glad you had. I haven't heard anything about talking about the Stafford, or changing to the Stafford County, except the last meeting we had three weeks ago. We've never talked about that before, have we?
When Adam came to us two council meetings ago, he asked us what our consensus was, and Marshall was gone, and we pretty much told him we would give him 30 days when we would have a full council, and this is just what I wanted to do, you know. I expressed my opinion that night that I was in favor of the city police department, but you know, like I said, Marshall was not there.
I thought maybe I missed something. Thanks for the part.
I think that everybody here, if you haven't been to any of the regular meetings, you should know I'm in support of the police department. I have been, ever since I've been on council, all of our emergency services, they should know that I'm in support of them. I know that we have discussed this, but no action has been taken. I don't think that we really need to be making this decision right now. I agree with the gentleman, the two gentlemen up here, that say that this outgoing council is gonna be making a decision for incoming council. They will have to deal with the ramifications of this. If it needs to come to a vote for council, we need to get the input from the community. If that requires a vote, then we need to do that. To get rid of our police department is, in my opinion, ridiculous. And it sets us up for crime that we are not prepared for. Most recently, we had the police department take care of a vagrant behind the library. I happened to witness that, and I saw Chief Saylor dealing with the individual. I had no idea that he had the person handcuffed, although they found out that this person had a warrant, if I'm correct on that, Chief. Okay. The other day, the school superintendent, Mr. Josh Myers, sent out an email regarding a student that had come to him, and I believe to the chief of police, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, about two gentlemen in a flatbed pickup with two weapons, and they were questioning him. Regardless of whether that is credible or not, it needs to be looked at and taken seriously. When you consider around this country, we are having more and more shootings take place. The most recent shooting was in a small town in Texas, a little bit smaller than us. Do we really want something like that to happen here? I know I don't. I spoke with the manager over at Dollar General, and she asked me to read this out loud, and council has a copy of this. It is a statement for our police department, and it reads, "I totally support our police department, both from being a manager of the Dollar General and also as a property owner planning on retiring here. No police, no safety, and no peace of mind. The streets are safer now with police patrolling them. My store is safer with the police department stopping by for a snack, seeing the police car in the parking lot. It tears a lot of problems, including robbery. I've moved here from a city where you could not set out on your porch at night or take a walk. I do not want to leave the town with no police department. The crime rate will go up, and people will move, and businesses will reconsider staying or moving to this town. Having a police department is not a good idea. Vicky Holler's manager, Dollar General." I also talked with the school superintendent, Josh Myers, and he wrote this letter of support dated December 4th. Dear St. John mayor and city councilor, I'm writing this letter to encourage you to keep the St. John police department intact. Our school staff has a good working relationship with the chief and his officers. They are always responsive when issues crop up, and the lines of communication are always open. I have serious concerns about public safety and school security if the council were to eliminate our police force. It is especially concerning if this is done without a clearly defined plan communicated to the public. I know you all have a tough job to do as city leaders, and I thank you for signing up for it. You have a responsibility to be efficient with taxpayer money. However, reduced cost does not always mean more efficiency. I encourage you to not only reconsider, to consider the cost of our local police department, but also recognize the benefits. Sincerely, Josh Myers, superintendent."
Anything else? Moving on. Pay plan for insurance.
So the documents that I gave you are the spreadsheets, I guess. From the research I've been doing, it's my understanding that the city got the better coverage to seek out employees and retain them. So I compiled my information off of the plan, the two plans that were proposed. We have one of the best insurance plans that the cross provides. So really going forward to talk about numbers at the same time, I don't know if you guys want to go forward with keeping our current plan. I mean, we can talk about all of the numbers. Jim has a handout here with his calculations and stuff on it. My first three spreadsheets that I gave you is our current plan. The second proposed plan, which is the higher deductible. And then the third spreadsheet was kind of a tier idea that I just, to try to have other options, I guess, other than just the city paying for 95 and the employee for 5. So your first spreadsheet, it has the current plan, and then it goes on to show the monthly and yearly rates by the city and the employee, and then that drops off 90, 10, 80, 20, and then 75, 25. So those numbers are all listed there, and then the savings is down below in that little chart, along with the second one, the exact same way. The tier, I just, you know, we've talked about it not being fair for like someone single compared to someone with a family. So I thought maybe showing some numbers tiered, like paying 100% for each of our employee, and then tiering for the, like, we have three categories. We have employee spouse, employee child, and then family. So I kind of threw around some numbers on that. I actually had Jim double-check me because by the time I got done looking at everything, I wanted to make sure I was right. So those numbers are there if you want to look at them, but just from the research I did, I didn't spend too much time. I did collect information on that. Is it day insurance that I proposed? I did, I think, last council meeting. And then I did request, it was a dual and a four, or four and two, which would have a health savings option. And I think that was included in your package. Jim found an article discussing the health savings account. So those are the options I chose to not... I chose to not do my numbers on that, just because that is not the coverage that you guys had talked about in the past for our city employees. So if you want me to run those numbers, I don't know if Jim did, but I can definitely get those numbers, but it was my understanding that you guys wanted to have good coverage for employees, so I kind of stuck with the current plans proposed, because I wasn't sure on the apples to apples. So.
What's council think on the Blue Cross windshield payment plan that she's put together? Or you're going to stay with the one you're at, or what?
So if we stay at the ninety-five-five, the city's cost is going to be ninety-five thousand five hundred and ninety-three dollars, and that obviously goes down with the more responsibility on the employee. If we go down to ninety-ten, we'll be saving five thousand thirty-one dollars. If we go down to eighty-twenty, we'll be saving fifteen thousand dollars, and these are roughly. And then if we go to the seventy-five, twenty-five, we'd be saving twenty thousand, a little over twenty thousand dollars.
I think we need to leave a part of that.
So those are the options on that, and then obviously, if we switch to the gold plan, that has a higher deductible, so that, I mean, that portion of the payment's going to be lower, so that's what the savings are going to be.
We've discussed, excuse me, Jamie's numbers are very sound on everything she ran. Give her a hand, she really did a good job.
Jamie, can you turn on your microphone, please? Very thankful.
The things that, when I was doing it there, everybody has a spreadsheet that I did, is we looked at paying, continuing on paying a hundred percent of all employees, and then paying their spouses and dependents. The plan that I personally kind of like the best is paying a hundred percent of the employees, and then eighty percent of the dependent, and then let the rest of them pick up the rest of their plans themselves. We have many employees that can pick up health insurance, and we have seven employees that are top eight employees in cities, and we have five and six employees in there. I don't think it's fair to the guy that's picking up just one, if you pick up five dependents on every employee. That's my thought on it, but you get the yellow spreadsheets and what I put together, and it's, it coordinates the same, so. It depends on how much risk you want to take, and how much you're willing to give up, because our plan, our Blue Cross, is going to do the best it's in, in network. It's almost everything will be in network, it's very well said. The article I read in the New York Times utilizes a health savings account where employers are committed to a health savings account, and that might give you the best bang for the buck, but today you have to have some, the banker, somebody to be the depositor or whatever, for a savings account for employee control. It's a lot of information.
I think the healthcare that we offer the employees right now, it's, it's very good. It was kind of pretty much an incentive to get people to come and work for the city. You know, I think that the people that applied for the job knew then that what was offered, and it was the same for the person that was single, or the same for the person that was having a family. You know, to say that that's not fair now is kind of hard to hear, you know. It's been that way. It's not likely to have changed it, and I think it should just be kept the same, ninety-five.
I agree with Ryan on this. I think this was done originally as an incentive to get quality people to come to St. John, and hopefully they would stay here for more than just a couple of months. This was part of their package when they first hired on, and to take it away from them right now, that is the definition of uncool.
What about it going up eleven percent? Subsort that.
Two cents to kill per hour of electricity cell. Got to make up the money somewhere. Can't come from poverty tax, so they'll have to come out of utilities. So just add twenty percent there, wants utility bill, pay for it.
Well, I don't think we've been making cuts anywhere else, you know. I don't think it should really start with employees. We don't say no to just every department.
It's your largest part of your paycheck, your budget's payroll. If you're going to keep paying, keep your budget, you're good at the biggest line item.
Before you come, I heard from the audience out there that they didn't want to put another one percent sales tax on it, that they didn't mind the raise, and they go, all right. So if they were to pay that, then we got, we got to raise up.
But why aren't we asking for that, for the police? For, no, it's everyone.
Thank you for the police department. This is everybody working for the city.
I have to say that because I've picked my own health insurance, it's two thousand dollars a month. Having a zero dollar deductible and paying five percent, I don't think it's too much to ask the employee to pay a little bit more to help cover some of the costs. I think it's only unfair, you will never find a plan, there's no one in this room that has this plan, other than city employees, and you will never get this plan. I don't want to do away with the plan, but I don't think it's unfair to ask for them to kick in a little bit more. Now whether that number would be five percent or ten percent more, I don't know, but I don't think it's unfair of us to ask them to pitch in and pay for some more. I mean, it is a benefit, we do not have to provide it for anybody, but then again, it is something that does keep some of our people employed, and I'm willing to work with them, but there needs to be a happy medium somewhere, I think.
I totally agree with Marshall about, you're not going to go anywhere else in this area and get the same type of health insurance plan that is provided and has been provided by the city. My wife works for a health insurance delivery company, and she pays about half of her policy for herself, accounting the family, and a much harder higher deductible. This is just, it's a heck of a deal, and there's so many employees that have over twenty thousand dollars worth of benefits just from health insurance. Half of a paycheck, benefits. I can't pay it, I don't know any other employer in town pays that kind of a benefit. And I realize we've got some really quality employees, but sometimes you have to make some cuts, and. Sure, you're being helpful, me employee.
Insurance is worth up eleven percent this year, if you got it all up, we heard about it in the last meeting, I think, right? If you're eleven percent on a hundred thousand dollars, that's thirty-two thousand dollars.
These are the new, these are the new tones.
Oh, these are the new tones?
This was off of what was proposed to us.
What does it do after, boy?
Zero. None. No deductible.
We're paid on dollars. The plan is tremendous.
No deductible. I'll say absolutely nothing.
It's very strong, I think.
Someone can have my desk.
I would like to see at least, I mean, my starting point is eighty-twenty, but, you know, I mean, even if the city picked up eighty-five percent of it, I would probably be okay with that, fifty blue, do fifteen. I don't think that's unfair to ask, that doesn't even cover the increase of what it went up this year. That's where I kind of stand on.
I would go with an eighty-twenty.
I mean, I know you don't have the, you probably don't have the figures for, because you've done ninety-ten, eighty-twenty.
Well, it's my personal hotspot in computer would work, since I've been a little bit down. We'll get you those numbers. I'm watching the video right now.
Three of the council members, she does, thinking about it.
I realize that's a lot, but what are you going to do next year? You're going to bump it back even more when increases to another ten percent? I just don't know what's going to do next year, but.
Well, I do know that for the last three years, it has increased, and we've never been in the employee's contribution, because prior to that, it had decreased, they had saved money, and so for the last two times for sure that we've had increases, the city has absorbed them, and actually caught back up to where it really hasn't cost us anymore what was figured until this year, and now it's gone an additional one percent, because the employees did not want to change and have a higher deductible, which was the offer last time in the base. They would rather, they actually said they would rather pay more and keep this plan than change and pay higher deductible. And that's when we often do, and leave it alone last year, and leave it the same, and we just absorb the increase. So for at least three years, the city's absorbed any increases that were heard about
I'd move to go to eighty-twenty for the employee and one dependent.
For the employee to have, not the employee and one dependent. I'd just assume that it was whole employee or a family, whatever they have now. Whoever cover now, leave it alone, just do an eighty-twenty.
You got a motion on the table? Time to like, uh, like a second.
I'd move to keep it the same, and keep paying ninety-five percent, five percent, same plan.
I'll second that motion.
We've got a motion on the table, to leave it the same as it is, ninety-five, five. We got a second, any more discussion on the issue? All in favor? All opposed? It fails, three to two.
I'd do eighty-five, fifteen, but.
I'll second that.
We got a motion on the table? We got a second, any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Passes three and two. Eighty-five, fifteen. Jamie, you got that there? Any other discussion on the Blue Cross windshield? Moving on. Meter deposit, all in.
Okay, I don't remember how long ago, but we discussed changing the meter deposit to like a connection fee. Started the new year, I would like to have that changed. Discussing the numbers with the auditor, I think we talked about two hundred and fifty, I think being, like I said, base, like a base price, because right now, if you move to town, your meter deposit is based on the people that lived there previously, divided by however many members, and this and that, and then having it be a deposit, we have to keep track of that money, and then if they don't end up getting it back, they get, they have to, I mean, they accrue interest, and, I mean, it's just really a nightmare. So I would like to see that changed to a meter connection fee instead of a meter deposit.
Is that going to be the change on, versus, versus property, industrial or property?
That's up to you guys. I think that's.
I'm going to add that to you.
That's up to you guys.
I think you should have a connection fee.
You're talking two hundred and fifty across the board, no matter what.
Correct. Yep.
But it's not a deposit, it is a connection fee, and it's not a return.
I mean, you can set it at whatever price you want, but I would like to see it as a fee, so it's not having to be kept track of and interest accumulating, and then trying to track down the people that don't get it for ten years.
But if they move, they would not get it back?
I mean, we try to track them down. I'm not sure. Jamie, have you ever had anyone not show up?
Well, usually we have like a forty high price, but sometime by the time we get to that point, already moved somewhere else, so when we stuck with that money, it's somehow a hassle just to find, I think, a person. We have one that, we have, still have the deposit, we're twelve years old, so, and the interest on that's pretty hefty, so if they ever did a refund back.
I'm fine with that. I think it works on a deposit. I guess I don't know what, do we know what?
The dollar figure, the average for, I think Eric said the average around here in the cities that he works with is about two hundred to two fifty.
Backing up, I think the reason it was, that formula was put into effect was it has something to do with the amount of the pension bill occurred average over four months, because if somebody moves in, at least you're stuck with a bill, was the reason that that formula was come up with.
Right, right.
Now that we shut off before that.
Yeah, I mean, and what's the, you know, a family of five is going to have a way higher bill than Travis might be in, you know, or a family of five's bill is going to be way higher than my bill. So it's just, I mean.
I think your connection fee is fine, just due to the dollar figure, but I don't think it should be the same for industrial as it should be residential.
Does he agree with that?
It might be double.
It's counsel, I'm just the mayor.
I think you wait until that time comes, because I think probably if you have a business coming in, you want to be as helpful as possible as you can be. I don't know if a business is going to come in here and invest hundreds of thousands of dollars and probably do that and not leave within a month. So I don't know how you determine that. I don't know if you do that case by case, or that's that fee.
Could you do some check line, Jamie?
In that room?
Because I do know that some businesses require nothing more than what is actually at a house. There's no sense in making a business that requires the same thing as your house does, pay a thousand dollars when they have nothing more than what you supply to a regular house.
Perhaps you could make, if you're going to get a business coming, and invest that money, he's going to be buying electricity from us. The worst thing you could, scenario is you might have to hang an extra transformer or something like that for him, but I think two fifty to five hundred would be a reasonable deposit to make across the board. Cannot, I should say, reasonable connection fee. But if there's, you know, if you can tell the employees or people, please, thank you, transformers. and eleven or twelve cents per one hour that we're charging. That's a cash cow.
Are they probably...
I would say just set it at two fifty across the board to be done with, no matter whether it's a business or residential.
I think we have to change that through the ordinance.
Yeah, we'll have to three, two, one, five, one, five.
Okay. So I'll have that ready for next council meeting.
Okay.
When I'm not here.
Okay, that completes all business. New business, Christmas bonus.
That wasn't Mark's.
We've done it for the last couple of years. And I still feel that our employees need a Christmas bonus. And so therefore, I would make a motion to pay one of our employees a hundred dollar Christmas bonus, like we had in the last year out of the electric department.
Second that motion.
Got a motion on the table to pay all the employees a hundred dollar bonus. We got a second? Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
I guess the pass. I was going to give a lump of coal for everybody.
Pass. Three, four, I didn't see the, yeah, it's right. Four, zero, one, substay.
Why weren't the Christmas names before you all named your R and Bs?
Sent you mine in the email.
How many employees city of course are there?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, full time?
Is that for full time and for time?
All city employees.
All city employees.
Any more discussion on the Christmas bonus? The last thing on new business for adjourned will be rezoning industrial park.
So I don't think I really have that on there. Just kidding. I thought that, so in our zoning meeting, we talked about rezoning the industrial park because it's not zoned industrial. And I thought I had to come to you guys before I did anything. Turns out I don't. So eventually you'll see that on there. But if you guys want to go over the minor changes on the personnel policy, I can go through that really quickly.
Are you?
Okay. John says no.
John says no? And what about the last one? Do we need to build?
No.
We don't need that. So we're done.
Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Mayor, member of the council, on the end. And I hope everyone here, I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to be here this evening, to tell you what our ideas and work and our opinions are. And thank you very much for this opportunity.